Okay, now the grantor will call me. Order this afternoon. Would you like to welcome everybody here tonight? Again, I'll be lower start. Multi motion for the agenda if you'd like to go over. Call them if you can attend us. Is your second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. The consent items, just take a look in minutes. Dale, you said that the annual fund of dollars to shake over was a minimum. Is that correct?
Yep.
There's another one?
Yep.
And the benchmark of the capital projects fund is that should have come up with capital projects fund, it was for the company that did the. You see the balance in the, how much, on the last bill that will come out this time? So, any more questions? I guarantee most of the consent items.
I'll move.
Your second?
Clear.
Okay, so discussion. All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Sure, leave all your own financial reports. If one thing I'd like to bring your attention.
Okay.
We have been paying $20,000 each year from the Pebble Fund to the General Fund to repay for track project and bus barn. When we paid the 20,000 last year, that finished the track project and my $31,099, $975 on the bus barn project. If we pay the usual 20 this year, that will leave about 11,000 on that bill. We have the money in the Pebble Fund and since this is the last year for the Sac County School District, I would recommend that we clean that up before June 30th, although it's not out there at all when things transfer over. So instead of paying 20, we pay 32 this year.
I'll make that motion.
And that will finish that up.
Okay, so second.
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion on that? Everybody understand what we're doing? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you for your job.
All right. I'll call the meeting on the W N B A order. I'm going to call all of you here and ask approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Your second to approve the agenda. All of the say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Let's look at the consent items. The primary minutes, bills, financial report. John, is there anything that you want to address?
No, second semester open, no bills are in here. Still quite extensive. That's about half of the building. I have a central community college, $12,000. It's for college credit courses, that's $21 per dollar. So, yeah, about 600 credits in here. All of us, um, apparently do what's down there. All of us off, huh? Yes, sir. Sorry. This one. Um, technologies that is for May.
They're in contract, it's still in.
July 30th.
Do we need to split the bills out?
We have to do that all before you write down. Are you ready to go ahead and chart out what you got?
Yes.
Have you entertained the motion to approve the bill of all right quota for 1606?
I'm going to vote aye. I'll second.
Motion in second. All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. There is 40. I would entertain a motion to approve the bill of the Walling Lumber for 21770.
Second.
Chris, second. Motion in second. All of the favor.
Aye.
Motion carries 40. And I would entertain a motion to approve the financial reports to minutes and reading bills on account. I'll make a motion. Second. All of the favor.
Aye.
Motion carries 50. Four, I'm sorry. The first two were three. No, thank you. This has been wrong for a month.
I'm going to let you, Mission State, because you're allowed. I'm going to let you read the mission state.
Well, as we proceed, we want to keep in mind the mission statement, that county schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens in an interchanging global society. We should always keep that in mind as we deliberate in school business.
Okay, administration report. First thing we had was.
Frank, we hear the permission pass out. Last week was school board recognition. We can related to pass the certificates out for the board meetings with the Association of School Boards. And I think it kind of a thankless job at times and it's just a token of appreciation. Couple of other quick updates. As we've been talking about, it's a pretty aggressive summer for buildings and grounds and projects and our estimation where I want to stay playing catch-up, but there's some stuff that needs to be done. And so we're investing in that and pretty aggressively. And also, that's important for lots of reasons. We're going to continue to invest in the facilities to keep them at as high a level as possible. Appreciate the input from board members as the plans have come together. Reminder that the last meeting for the Learning for the 21st Century Committee is scheduled for May 24th, last meeting for this year. I'm not sure whether that will go after that, but we down to three very important goals for school and communities. We'll share more information after the 24th meeting and June board meetings on how that information changes. And then the last thing that I have is I will just pass it around to the committee that each year the industrial tech kids take projects down to, I should say one, to the Southeast Bulk Exposition. And our kids study industrial tech area, lots of places, but in this particular case, industrial tech area, did extremely well. They give, this organization, the Des Moines Rotary Club gives one $1,000 scholarship and this year they gave three $500 scholarships and that's a state, that's open to statewide. And two of our students, Tanner Berry, got the $1,000 scholarship and then Phil Rutherford got one $500 scholarship. So, two out of the four scholarship winners for this organization came out of East Sac. I would encourage you, and they did very well with, you'll read with blues and gold medals and all of that stuff. Tomorrow, actually, and would remind everyone that there is a show at the High School, Kevin, 4:00 to 7:00, is that right?
4:30 to 7:00.
4:30 to 7:00, where the work, not just industrial tech, but in art as well and what else.
Art and family consumer science.
Also consumer science. Kind of an exposition where you can see the work and the talent that our kids have and the work that they've done is incredible. So, we'd like to share good news and this was a major accomplishment, so.
If I can say something, I've actually been in here and seen some of the work that they do and it is amazing. I went to school here too and we never did work like that when I was in school.
We didn't or you didn't?
I didn't.
Okay.
I definitely didn't.
Me either and if you have an opportunity to get to the school tomorrow to see the work of the kids, it's worth your time. They do some amazing things. That's what I've got.
Any questions, Kevin?
Just if you have questions on the written report today that the guys have.
Talk about the change in the hot lunch.
What's that?
Talk about the change in the hot lunch situation.
Oh, cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
Right now the current cafeteria we use is quite small and we run three ways of lunch through, give or take, between 85 and 90 kids who roll through there in three ways. In talking to Steve Neutman and Mike Neighborhaus, we talked about is it possible to use our small gym? Currently, during the day, the gym isn't used for anything other than kind of the holding pen, I guess, when the kids are done eating lunch. Sounds terrible, but I probably shouldn't.
About waiting area.
Yeah, the meeting, okay, whatever. They just, they go there after lunch and they wait there a couple of hours and they go off to their respective classes. And so we don't really utilize that small gym. And we thought, there's a good place to make it kind of a multi-purpose setting, have a little more space in there to allow them to eat lunch. And that's what we talked about. They've got a floor scrubber. I was going to observe about it, it's a wood floor. And so as I was talking to Mike and see what about, because kids are going to spill and that's just a natural consequence of having a lunchroom. But we've got a floor scrubber that'll pull that stuff up. They do it in the morning, now let us do it after the hot lunch program or hot lunch is done at 12:52. So we think it'll make them more conducive place for kids to eat, so they don't sit on top of each other.
Two lunches or not?
No, for sure. That's out there. They want to get our schedule all worked out. We think we can run it in two lunch ways.
So the lunch period would be how long?
Uh, still be 30 minutes. And then we'll have to figure out what we're going to do with an extra additional, about 20 minutes.
Well, the advantage to lunch shifts, if it works out to maybe do that, is right now there's a group, obviously, that has a class for a little while, then they go eat and they have class and come back. We can get away with that.
We've got a split class. Be lunch, you go to class for 20, about 22 minutes. Go eat lunch for that 30, then go back to class for another 23 minutes. And that's hard. I mean, it's just, it's hard. The teacher's hard for kids and every teacher kind of cringes when they're scheduled to see who has be lunch ways, because you know, that's just not a good situation. If we can get rid of that, that'll just make it a more conducive education.
Brighter in the gym, too.
What's that?
Lot brighter in the gym.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We also gain back some supervision if we can do too, because right now you need supervision in the overflow room as well as cafeteria and so that adds back in some teacher time to work with kids in classes. That's what's driving this educational.
Do you have any plans for the would-be old lunchroom?
We've talked about making that a college classroom. Like when Gene Coon comes over from Placid to East Western Sale, they should have been using the current I C N, but that's going to be gone. And so we're going to need to organize a classroom that he can use, that has technology. We thought that'd be a good place to have it. It's a large room, so it'll be great to add to accommodate pretty good sized groups of kids. We thought when we can add more of a college classroom.
Anything else for Kevin? Denny? Have one, the date of the final concert, this maybe show. I forgot what that was.
That's basically small groups performing both band and choir. Probably groups anywhere from six on down. I don't know what that is.
And the date?
Oh, 24. Yep, it's, yep, yep. And they're planning on doing that out in the lot outside of cafeteria if it's a nice day. So, we don't know necessarily what to expect numbers wise. I think the pork producers are going to have Gerald hamburgers that night. They're getting some different donations for that night. I'd also like to, the one thing I would like to publicly say is thank you to the Sac City Police Department, Sac County Sheriff's Department and State Farm for doing the Sydney Project last Thursday with the eighth grade students. It was basically a drunk driving simulation, kind of a lead into driver's ed. So, kids enjoyed it. There were groups of eight, anywhere from eight to 10, went over to the elementary parking lot and got the experience of driving a little go-kart, probably, I don't know, maybe 10 miles an hour, which may be the fastest that it went. But they took control of it. You're driving it and all of a sudden you lose control and then they got the experience of the intoxication goggles as well.
By the lot six times, but to figure out what you were doing.
Yeah, yeah. And then they had a conversation with police about tasers and so they got several different pieces of education that day, so.
Okay, any questions for Danny?
How did the transition day go?
The, which one? Fourth grade or the eighth grade? The fourth grade we didn't get to do because of weather.
Oh, you didn't?
No. And actually, we made the call the day before because presenters were coming from various areas around, so we needed to make the call. Of course, the day comes and if the day like today is beautiful out, but it was muddier than I'll get out, out there. And if we would have had the fourth graders go there and then come here in the afternoon with muddy shoes, that was the night that we had Simon Estes here, so that it would have been announced. But anyway, we did bring the fourth graders here. Instead of going to Haggy Park, we did the tour with them and the conversation with fifth grade student council. Oh, my God. They were here probably an hour and a half after school.
Anything else? Mike's report.
Just to thank P T O for their generous donation.
That's great.
Yeah.
No questions? Nope. I'm along the education spotlight. High school student building leadership team, Brett, sorry, you're going to take the way. Let some help.
Let Jamie here. So, I think the high school building leadership team, otherwise abbreviated as B L T, it started beginning of last year, I believe. And you were chosen out of your, your home gym advisor chose one student out of their advisor group to serve on this committee. And it's very similarly structured to the teacher B L T in terms of meeting times and how the meetings carried out. I guess you would say, we try to meet every other Wednesday during lunch. And as I said before, it's split up into a junior group and a senior group. So Jamie is part of the junior group, the ninth and 10th graders. And I'm on the senior group, the 11th and 12th graders. Jamie, would you like to talk about some of the policies we've discussed over the last couple of years?
Some of the policies you brought up is like the cell phone issues in class and in hallways. We've talked about how, well, most people actually walk down the hallway and kind of ring it up with their books. I mean, we do, the teachers do that too, but they kind of do it a little bit. Sometimes, not all the time. But we've been talking about maybe next year, we need to be able to use it during the hallway, well, in between classes, the four minutes we have and all of that. And, oh, semester test opting out of first semester, first year.
If they have an A and they have all of their work turned in first semester, then they can opt out of non-college credit courses. So that kind of gave most seniors a little incentive to work because, as you all know, and I'm sure you all had to take them too, you just hate semester tests, silly. And so that really gave them incentive, something to look, or something to work towards, I guess. And that was only for seniors. Second semester didn't apply because that's always been a policy, you can opt out of non-college credit courses if you have, what is it?
Your I.
Or D, if you're passing with a D minus, which has been talked about, maybe increasing that. I see some looks on the board. Personally, I think, yeah, personally, I think it should be raised a little bit. I know, I talked with a former teacher down at I K M, it was an A. And those kids worked. She said it really, and you wouldn't think it had an impact, but it did. And I guess if word ever gets out that I just said that, it'd probably be one of the most hated kids in school. I mean, most done, so it's all right. Keep going. Oh, technology policy and issues, I guess. That was probably our main discussion this past year. Our trouble, our technology, we've been having some issues, as you all know, but it's really nice, we've gotten most of those resolved, a few issues here and there. And I guess that's the biggest thing that the B L T wants to stress, is that almost every single class we take, technology is required for, computers, emailing, everything. It is required. And I guess that's what, you know, if we're going to learn, we need that. And there were days where we had to sit idle in class because our documents were on the H drive. And I know that's maybe a once in a 10-year occasion, but I guess just talking, speaking in terms of technology across the board, just make sure that's always up to code because that really does impact our education. I don't think there was really anything else. I guess it's, we're kind of the voice of the students, I guess. So any concerns that the students may have, we can bring them to our meeting every other Wednesday and discuss them, which is really nice to do, I guess. A lot of students, they feel like their opinions are being heard. And then we bring up the opinions of the students and then that usually goes to the teacher, the L T, administration follows through, all the way up to school board. And so I guess there really hasn't been any issues. I'm sure this next year you will deal with the technology policy because I think that's one of the forerunners in policies. I really don't think there's anything else that we've talked about. It's kind of been hit and miss. This last year, just seems like every year is busy, but this last year, there's something about it that just seemed even more busy. So, I guess there's really nothing else to say, except that I know in our B L T meetings on behalf of the B L T, as Dr. Feeney said before, being on the school board is kind of a thankless job. And I guess that we want to thank you for listening to some of the policies that we want to enact, some of our concerns of the school, and I think those have been heard. So that is what we want to stress today, I guess. If there's any questions that you guys have in regards to policies, just make sure, you know, include the student, because that's, you know, that's really what schools force the students. And I think every once in a while, sometimes that gets looked over and you just have to remember to look at those directly. So if there's any, if there's not any questions, we will let you get on to meetings.
Do you feel that the B L T committee has benefited the schools?
Oh, very much so. Hundred and ten percent.
People come up to me every once in a while, I'll be like, you're on B L T, right? Yep. And then tell me their problems and I'll tell Ms. Wolfman. She'll tell me where to go and talk to people and it always gets started.
I think that's one of the best things that has probably happened administratively in high school over the last couple of years, probably the B L T, so.
How does that interact or, we have a student council or student senate as well. How do the two groups run parallel, interact?
I'm glad you brought that up because currently we do not, we are not associated directly with the teacher B L T, which I was going to bring that up, but we haven't had a meeting in the last month, a piece of graduations and everything else. We, I was going to bring that up, that I think it would be nice if we could meet, this probably is directed more towards Mr. Lyrd, that we could meet with the teachers every once in a while. I know that's kind of difficult because I think you guys meet in the mornings or after school, so, but I think most kids, you know, most kids that are on B L T, they're responsible individuals, that they would come to school that early in the morning. So I think that'd be really nice. Student council, you know, I know my parents were in school, used to be, you know, kind of their job is what we're doing now. And some, you know, within the last 30 years, 30, 40 years, that's kind of, careful. We've kind of, it's kind of gone by the wayside of that, you know, which we, what they still do though is really important because they're in charge of class competition, everything else, which they have a lot, in fact, they have more meetings than we do. So they're really important. But they, I guess we handle more of the administrative, the policies, they.
The more big picture stuff maybe and it's not as much day to day?
Yeah, but that's probably, yeah, that's probably a good summary of that.
So you see them, see each having different roles and they're not doing the same thing? They're not passing into each other's territory?
No, I, yeah, I think we've done a pretty good job of keeping out of, you know, each other's business, I guess you would say. You know, everybody has their own rights and responsibilities and I think we've done a very good job at leaving those responsibilities to each group.
You said you're appointed by your advisory. How many kids does that involve?
Is there about 15? Depending on the.
Size of class. You'll have, example, the sophomore class is smaller class, they've probably got four members. Senior class has 74 kids in this, they've probably got six. But just in fairness to me, we try to limit the advisor by, they go between 10 and 15 kids, so, give or take, we probably got, I'm going to say we threw out 24 members, probably something like that, maybe about 20 members that represent the student B L T. But I should tell you, I mean, they won't say this, they've met several times in front of our teachers as a staff.
Oh, man.
And it's something that, whenever you see kids talking, I couldn't have done that about in high school, but for all my teachers and talk about a change or something, I would have been scared to death. But these young people have gotten up there and they, you can tell they're prepared and they've thought through what they want to see happen and they articulate what they want to see. And whenever they present their views and their thoughts, teachers do listen. And I think it means a ton and it goes right back to what your mission statement talks about. That's really what you're trying to do is for kids to be proactive. And these guys have taken that very seriously.
Well, thank you very much.
Finished business, update on the deliveries for my voiceover.
Just wanted to keep that out in front of everybody because we're, our official schedule, I forget the time, on Friday, June 3rd with Kevin Erster from Benchmark and the foreperson from the company that's going to be doing the work for a pre-construction meeting and that's, and they've been interchanging or been passing information back and forth and Kevin is reviewing all of this stuff, cafeteria and go and all of that stuff. And that's unfolding nicely. I thought it was interesting too that estimates would be 22 working days to finish the project, which is pretty good. Thanks. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
And that's weather permitting, of course, so it's possible that they would start that following Monday is what the hope would be, depending on weather and stuff, which I guess would be June 6th, that they could be completed perhaps by the fourth of July and be done in the fall. And we would have a new roof on it. So, everything's unfolding like it's supposed to unfold at this point. The one thing that you need to give us some direction on is the color for the metal stuff. I talk so technical. Dale, what do you call it? Fashion, all right?
Round.
Yeah, that's a little stuff on the edge. I gave you, all of you, a chart that was off of my home printer, which didn't work as well. Want to see the originals there? If you want to see some larger samples, I can write you guys for that. Got three different colors there. This is the one that it originally was and it, we held it up next to the brick and stuff and it matches, nice one, it's this color. The problem that we would see, Dale, you can jump in if you want, but the problem is it doesn't stay that color and it doesn't match some of the other things that have been repainted. So you'd have a little orange. repainted, so you'd have multiple orange things going on in the building. I personally wouldn't think that's a good idea. The one that Charlie's holding up with the X on it is the one that is probably the most neutral, and it's easiest to match, and it's going to be, allow you to do whatever you want with the building. That's what-
That would be pretty close to what our current, our front doors are, they're just a little darker than that.
Pretty close, and we held it up, and as we repaint and do those things, we'll match it exactly, so.
What's other recommendation?
I went up there and I tried, trying to match up, and I took my wife up there, she's got a good hand at sort of color. He just shook her head, and the thing that, there's nothing, there's nothing that's going to match, it just, anyway, the idea to come up, I talked to Dale, and the idea that he brought up and we talked about was, come in as close to cat as you can, and then repainting the whole thing, just so you can match it up, so it doesn't look so hodgepodge, so to speak. And if you have to have a professional painting, that's my suggestion after.
Okay, so the roofing company is going to do that. They're going to repair the roofs, and then they just have to figure out what color flash we need, so.
That sounds great.
My idea is, if you try to even come close to that orange, if you have a different shade, it's going to look bad, so.
I would say the contrasting color looks better, but being pretty close to the doors, it would be, and certainly go well with the bricks up there.
When you walk and down, that's the thing, when you hit those holes and you, you have to have a hard panel.
Yeah.
There.
What if they get a paint?
There, I don't know how you do it.
He'll do it.
I'll paint those, yeah.
If you, if you take that orange swatch around the backside, where the sun beats on the backside of the gym, they're not even close. So that's why I didn't think, trying to match an orange would be a good thing at all.
Which pleasure?
I'll make a motion to go with the medium rock.
A second?
One second.
Is there any other discussion?
Medium rock.
This is the color.
It's the long.
It's a real neutral.
That looks like the doors.
Where? And then we can take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any discussion? All the players say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can all of them agree with that?
At this point, yeah, it's all set up to, to be rough.
Okay. Discussion approval was coming in this project list, which we have.
And as we, no, John, don't say anytime you want, but we ask that Dale can help us too, because, you know, some of this is coming from plans that have been talked about for a while, some of it is from the board members, some of it's from the people that are in the launch every day, the meeting staff. Again, as we advertised that we were going to do, at this point, there's a list of things that would be SAC projects, a list that would be WLBA projects, and then at the bottom is the second page, in no particular order, which is what you wrote too, which is nice. Just different things that we've talked about that we will want filled into the capital improvement plan, which we'll start working on. Actually, I probably won't start working on it this summer, because the guys are going to be rebuilding. But as the school year unfolds, then we'll start developing that, and then we'll do a plan for what we will be doing in coming years. The whole idea is to not get caught behind, is to stay ahead of the curve, and that's what we're after with that coming plan. What we really would like, I'm thinking out loud here, we would need each board to approve the listing of projects, and then there are a couple that are starred that require board action because of the size of this. And those are starred on your sheet, I believe, on the front.
Did you hear from the playground?
The playground.
We don't have this here. Oh, we don't have a school wrestling. So if they, a little light, we go around more than one hundred, we probably can do a color in the construction.
Yep.
So if we get the project approved, the board calls, we can approve it.
The playground.
We look after it.
Playground.
There's a playground.
There is, as far as the playground, the one that Mike and the staff talked about is the one that I just handed out before the meeting, and then there's another one here that has the price of another bid, and Mike, you should jump in, you and the staff looked at the one that you're recommending, that's the one that's even made the needs and it's, that's a recommendation, in other words. And so, yes, that, that'll be a decision as well. The base bet for the other one is 23, and it wasn't included on the other stuff, so that's actually, yeah, it's a lot. 43, 3, 1, 16, just the playground.
Are these figures all quoted figures? These are actual quotes.
Yes.
The comment that I would have, looking to this list, is part of the reason, well, it was the exact reason why I was late both meetings, is I was looking at the bathroom projects, or looking at what those would be in retail, and it was apparent to me that things needed to be done. I don't know if they've ever been updated since this apartment building was built in 1936, it looks like some of it wasn't, some may have been. My concern is, if you add up, looking at this, you have an estimate of maybe 40,000 for the plumbing and the bathroom partitions, there's 21,000, and then auto flush valves were, might be in some of the other apartment buildings too, but all that stuff, that's like, what, 66,000 dollars. My concern is, there's issues, just when you walk into the restroom yourselves, doors are a little funny, there are two smaller doors, maybe that should be looked at. And once you get into the bathroom, there's various different styles of urinals and toilets and stall sizes and everything, and I don't know who the expert is for what, where to look for one, but I think maybe we might need help with this, on more of a planning situation. I guess my concern is, if I look at it and you just want to pull up the store toilets, put new ones in, put flush valves on it, and then put new partitions in, you know, we're going to spend 60,000 bucks for new ones.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yep.
Where we're at with that is that we've taken a board member around, we had Steve Nitsman and Bruce and different people, as we talked about that around, we're talking about taking out a urinal here and spacing them differently, taking out and redesigning it as well. We certainly can look for some outside consultation, but we're not talking about just slap out the old and slap in the new, we're redoing with that.
Well, and that's some of what I'm getting at, too, I guess, and I know that some of those urinals right downstairs by the banter, you know, by the music room. Those urinals go into the floor, they go into the terrace, and you're not going to be able to place those without doing something completely different, which means tearing out the terrace or building a plowswall or something like that. I also looked, and you can't get to the back of plumbing. There are issues there that, it's more than just, let's put new toilet in.
Absolutely.
And, and I don't know where to get the expertise for that, I guess. I would rather spend 100,000 dollars and have a nice tiled bathroom, looking very nice, than spend 60 on it, just to have newer porcelain and, and different dividers that are going to be written on again and spray painted on. That's, that's what I'm getting at. Like, if we're going to do it, let's do it really right, not just-
I was with Steve the other day, he was talking about partitions and stuff, about using this thing, we just, they have some kind of-
It's nanolite, it's plastic with a, I think it's got a metal that keeps it straight. It supposedly cleans easy, I've never been down on it, but-
Well, I mean, and that's great, and I think those are the things we need to look at, but when you start talking about taking out every other toilet or whatever, then do you, I mean, I went to the girls' bathroom, and if you take out every other toilet, like Dave was talking, your spacing is going to be funny, and then if you're going to do that, then do you just leave it that way, or do you rip up the entire floor and get all the spacing the right way, or let's code now? And that turns into, that's not 20,000 dollars, I promise you, it's not 20,000 bucks. It's a lot, and, and more than that. And so what I'm getting at is, I guess I'd like to know the scope of the whole project, not just, let's redo the bathrooms and maybe a five-year project, or a five-year upgrade. I'd rather do it really nice, or honestly, not near as extensive, just put in some new partitions and paint it again, but that's where I'm at with it, so. But I'm not against doing a project, I just need to know what the project really is, and I'm not sure everybody has come together, I guess, so, that's my two cents. My question is, how much of this can we do without involving an architect? It seemed to me that about two years ago, we had them an architect if we wanted to change rolls of paper in a restroom. And I'm just wondering what we have to do now with architects to have permission to go ahead with projects? I think it's ridiculous that we have to employ architects for some of these projects that are just common sense, but I know that there are rules out there that we're going to have to follow.
The rest of the plumbers, I mean, the plumbers are asking to actually put the joints together, and the restroom's down, so. One of the plumbers is all there. It ain't have power water here for life, so. It's a matter of take the floor to do it, I think.
One's going to take it.
Dr. Feeney, didn't Kevin from Benchmark, didn't he offer that as an consulting, kind of the bathrooms, he would take a look at our roof here to give us some idea of-
Oh, I thought, I thought he did interior, or somebody in his company did interior stuff, too. I didn't have that conversation, Dale. It may exist. My conversation with Kevin Erster was, let's take a look up here, so we know what to do, and what we need to do with the roof. Yeah, that type of consultation has to be, I think, it has to be. I think 40,000 was based on, it's in practice, when we were just, they weren't involved in that review.
Two, we reviewed 23, he's, that's, he just took that number on. I know Bruce is working to get some prices, and I know one came in today, but Chuck, in answer to your question, as I go through the list, remodeling the office required an architect and fire marshal approval, and that's been done. Essential air replacement, the FCS required an architect and fire marshal approval, and that's been done. The entry door should be fine, that's a replacement. Carpet, any, plant repairs. The only better thing on there, I guess, is if they have any question at all, we can renovate the restroom. And we've typically been told, if you don't change the use of the room, and you don't change the heat dress, you don't need architect or fire marshal approval. So I feel pretty confident that those projects are required. This is a big thing. It seems to be that I recall a couple of years ago, we were talking about that restroom on the main floor, there led you across from the superintendent's office.
Yep, that came up. I don't know if I can come on my turn, huh?
Do we know, the special air and stuff, that'll be in before they come in June to do the roof?
Todd from control has everything, he's got everything for the exhaust vent for the kitchen, he's got everything lined up, set up on the roof.
Before they start?
As soon as we decide, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Wasn't processing, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, because he wants to get that done before they go to work.
Okay.
I guess that different times, we spend time going over these projects, with Steve and Dale, and I guess I feel comfortable with the ones that we have, other than we haven't done, we haven't done yet, which is going to be a day or two.
We will dig a little deeper on Brett's point.
Yeah, I think if you're going to do it, do it right.
Yeah, which is the term we've been using, but let's make sure that's the case.
Do you have a restroom that can be had, acceptable, as far as, I mean, going in with those doors, would be quite cumbersome. And I don't know if it's got another restroom, like a staff restroom that they use normally?
Say that again, Marty, I didn't hear you.
Well, if you had a student in a wheelchair, do they use the regular restrooms, or do they have a staff restroom they can use that's easier?
There's a regular restroom, but it's a large, large stall, big door.
But they still have to go through two sets of doors?
Um, I believe there's just one set of doors on the one downstairs.
Okay. Just that's something to think about, too.
Because we've had people in wheelchairs.
Yeah, and you never know.
Yeah, we've accommodated students before that way, we had it all up to-
But if there's an opportunity to maybe make it easier for them?
Sure.
I could name off schools that have redone their bathrooms and done it in a, how can I put this? Not in an expensive way, and it looks that way. And so I concur with both of them.
A lot of times, it doesn't cost that much more to go first class, and whenever we can do that, I think we should go first class.
And what do you want, tools here, so we can go by the things that we have, what we can be approved of?
No. If the board, each board would approve the list of projects for their respective district, or if they want to strike a project or whatever, that's fine, but if they approve the project list, then administration can award to the correct vendor, any project under 25,000 dollars, that's per board policy. So we just need to approve the list. And then, for instance, for SAC and the playground, that's going to be awarded to somebody over 25,000 dollars, so we'll make an actual bid or motion to approve, compared to your recommendation. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and the boards are just going, we're going to approve the project, but not the vendor.
Approved. I think your motion, Mike, want to sound like approval of the summer project list as presented, or whatever changes you want to make. Then, once that's done, we'll come back individually for the ones that require a limited decision. Does that make sense?
So I would entertain a motion to approve the summer projects for WLBA that do not require-
that do not require board action for the bid approval.
I'll make that motion.
Here we have a motion of second. A little discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I entertain the same with that for it. That we approve the project except the ones that require individual board at all. And that would include the, right now, that we have in the school restroom, so we'll kind of, anyway.
Just second half. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now we need to go back and do the individual board.
What is the status already?
Okay, so where do you want to take first place?
I'm gonna just work off that front page.
Steven, man.
Hi, you.
Okay, the first one for WLBA is heating and cooling for the offices on the main floor and apparently consumer science remodel, heating and cooling. Two bids for what they call variable refrigerant flow systems are fifty-six-eight from Drees and forty-three-eight from Carol Controls. And then alternate bids to that was thirty-six-five from Drees and forty-one-four from Carol Controls. And those are, um, forced air systems and heat pump systems. Not as efficient, this first system, and Chris and Jack have kind of gotten an explanation of this from somebody that knows more about it than me. But, um, we've kind of been directed by the people we've talked to about this, that the first bid, fifty-six-eight and forty-three-eight, is from rain fishing and will be cost-benefited on the lawn.
Let's go with that, this goes right along with whatever they're saying about it. We're gonna do it, let's do it right the first time. This, this takes the heat that's not used, used from off the boilers and runs it back through, and, I mean, it's expandable in the future. It's the way to go right now.
So I'll make that motion to approve that? You've got a thirty-four, I don't want to start over. I make that motion to approve the, the, yeah, forty-three thousand eight hundred. Are we just doing that one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I'll second that.
No, any discussion? Any idea why there's a thirteen thousand dollar difference between those two bids? That's a pretty high percentage of the total cost.
It's, well, I can tell you part of what it is, and I haven't looked at this system at all, but it is all computer controlled. It'll be open and closing valves all day long because it'll cycle just right. It'll be a minimum on boiler operation time, and it'll get the most use out of it. So that's what it is, that's why it is.
But, you know, what I'm wondering is, there's thirteen thousand dollar difference between Drees' bid and Carol Controls' bid. I'm wondering why that's.
And I don't know on that.
Why the big difference, that's a, that's a huge percentage of project.
That Drees was gonna come in, but then you have to hire Carol Controls to, Carol Controls again, you make.
That's, that is right. I wonder maybe that's it, maybe Drees has to hire somebody else to do it. Carol, Todd does all that. I think, I don't know this for a fact, but I've been visiting with both of the bidders. This is not new technology, it's been used various places for a long time. It's reasonably new to our area, of which I don't believe that Drees has ever done this type of new before. I don't know that's an explanation, but common sense would say it might be.
Questions and discussions? Well, we have a motion to accept the bid of Carol Controls at forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. So, ready for the vote? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The second item for the WLBA board that has gone is electrical service to the new FCS room. Drees' bid thirty-eight-six, Lauren's bid thirty-six-nine, and comparable, more estimation. The AM service, I believe. And it has to come from the south end of the building to the north end, so it's quite expensive. And I have no reason to believe that either party would be.
Let's just say, what's our experience been with Drees and Lauren?
Been good with both. Lauren, we had all of our football field, we just bought the lights after the hailstorm. He thinks metal work for us, likewise, Drees has been working for us in kitchens and stuff. They both went to work for us. So I guess with that in mind, our recommendation would probably be WLBA.
Be hard to justify, I take it.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a second to accept the one, it's thirty-three thousand nine hundred for the electrical work in the high school, FCS room. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Let's go bathrooms and bathrooms.
We do. Actually, if it's not, if it's not there, it would actually be.
We have new numbers, thirty-three, five, seven, three for the IPS, and thirty. Too much of a challenge. It's okay if he's still.
So we are deciding, we, GIs will.
We're trying to, it's a school supply.
I'll make the motion that we approve the bid from Keith Interior. Thirty thousand two sixty-two.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, and next is, you want to wait with the bathrooms until we get the actual funding and help we have next month?
If you're gonna, let's go back to the bank. Above there, you can use the same logic there. Thirty-three, thirty-two thousand. He is calling me though, too. I'll make a motion to approve painting in locker rooms and the restrooms for the toll booth. Thirty-two thousand six hundred and ten dollars. To King and King.
Just stay there.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, now with the bathrooms, we're gonna wait, this is a different one, this bit. Then we have to.
I think, we don't have anything approved there anymore, we just approved, you guys still looking at different options because.
The money hasn't been over twenty-five, we just have to get together and discuss.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, let's do that, let's, let's get those bids in and then we can get together and. Ah, but the playground, we'll take care of tonight. All recreation.
I'll make the regulation for all, um, recreation for the package one, which is fifty-six thousand seven hundred and the professional installation of fourteen thousand two hundred.
For the whole thing? Whole thing you're gonna do? Both of them?
Yeah. Because I think if you're gonna do it right, you can.
Yeah, we've done that, we've done that pretty. Is there a second you have, Rush?
I'll second.
Thank you, you asserted more discussion.
What discussion then, where is this gonna go exactly? I mean, where's the location?
If you remember where the old woodman was, it'll be in that section. We gotta get somebody up there to measure it all out. It'll fit in there, we know, but.
Okay.
Then where will the beginning guard one be?
It'll be actually over on the black top section.
Okay.
But what?
And I, I shouldn't, I definitely shouldn't add that.
Without, without Mike knowing for sure, I'm not exactly sure how that's gonna lay out, but. Just go back to it, yeah.
Okay, that's all right. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for all the recreation.
Right, I'll tell you a little bit on what we started to talk about. No, no, that's a good question. It's gonna be located, like Dale said, when you come out of the doors to their facing to the left. What direction is that? Norah. It'll be fenced off, and there'll be some stuff in there. We'll come back in June with what that's gonna look like, we're not ready for it. And we'll try to, we'll try to work, because the same thing's going on in the wall, like, try to just become a building and all of that.
And I know at one point we had talked about basketball hoops. Those, I don't think were in this bid, are they?
They're, they're in here. That one I handed out tonight, which you made a.
Oh, okay, but that, is that in? That wasn't in, it's not on the list. No, it's not on, it's not on this list, that can make a.
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Please do.
I would like to make a motion for, it says four.
Yeah.
Four goal center basketball hoops for the elementary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay.
That should do it. Pretty big number, it sounds like.
WLBA audit, only to the board members who received one. Typically, I report the solvency ratio. I have our, we're doing ten and a half percent secure. Part eight, eight or nine, Frank, would you agree? Seven or eight percent, so we're above the target. So that's what it is. I typically don't go through all financial reports, so I go to the back and look at the findings and comments and the others. So if you look at page forty, forty-eight, they start there with what they did. Forty-nine, the first three comments, separation of duties, financial statements, and signature stamp are, comments that we had in the past, and at least the first two are common for our district outside of, for the, our. Page fifty, um, there's a follow-up on the signature stamp. Page fifty-one is no matters of non-compliance or interim control efficiency for federal awards. Page fifty-two, um, budget was fine, no questionable expenditures, no travel spending problems. We have commented on different transactions with board members. We've got no problem with bond charge. They may comment on our board minutes because they will occasionally pay some inflation or some spending activity bills throughout the month. We may pay them efficiently for a barbie, technically they should not pay that. So we were good enough for that. Had a sleeping pill away, we're still on a certified enrollment, we had a small there, there, the biggest there for us. Supplementary waiting is okay, profits and investments, CAR, cash flow, the funding was all fine. No problems with sales docs. Once again, they wanted to sell our house, gave them checks, they drove out of three hundred. So, I think that's about it. Any questions I can answer for you? And if you get any questions from community members or whatever, we're gonna do this at all. The auditors take all of those ideas, so.
I then have to talk to, uh, approve the financial audit for WLBA. Second.
Second, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, I'll go over very quickly to, most of the same areas that John highlighted on there is the same audit he does on our audit, so they're laid out in the same format. Page four, it shows our solvency ratio at the end of last year, twenty point nine seven, which is up from thirteen year before, so we are in excellent financial position by their standards anyway. Uh, most of the other charts in there are just a breakout of funds, and if you look through those and have questions on them, uh, please let me know. I will also direct your attention back to the back part of the report, where are the conclusions and findings. Uh, page forty-four, it starts with compliance issues that are in terms of control. There were no areas of efficiency pointed out. And so you get back to, um, page forty-seven, it talks about segregation duties, which is the common one for all school districts, John has the same comments, I'm sure, for WLBA audit. Uh, the financial statement preparation, we do not have staff on hand, us qualify to prepare the staff, to prepare the financial statement according to their standards, so unless we hire somebody to do it. Uh, the signature stamp is also an issue for us because there are times when that gets used uh, in sort of short circuits to dual responsibility, but, um, we do that very limited number of times, but it is mentioned in the report. Uh, then when you look back, page fifty, the only other items of any note there is about the third, second, third, fourth one down, under business transactions, and this is a common one for our district, it's been around everywhere that they've done the audit, because I'm an officer, was an officer, see, I have a state hand. And that will be going away, so that should no longer be a problem on the audit in the future. Um, but everything else seemed to be in order, and they didn't have any findings that they criticized this for. If you have questions on some of those schedules, they break them out a lot in different ways, let me know, and I'll try to explain, especially if I can with some of those schedules.
Do you have any questions?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, first and now, reservations?
Okay, we have a presentation from Todd Von Tiger.
Okay, we have resignation from Todd Von Tiger, Girls' Golf Coach, and from Garcia Adams, High School Media Associate. Motion to accept, please. Second to that motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you have the contract, is that correct?
The contract, yeah, for Sarah Carlson was for assistant speech. The numbers were warranted. Sarah did the job, and we probably can pre-prepare.
The word is done.
And the office, that motion is going. Approved then.
Okay, a motion subject to compensate. Sarah Adams, her local High School Media Associate. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same. Motion carries, four zero.
Jay, if you charge a diagnosis that they... Taking another vacation.
Yeah.
I can't make it to the 27th in the evening. I can make it at 4:00 in the afternoon, or 4:30. Somewhere in there, but I've got to be out here by 7:00.
So if we can meet it.
What's that?
Are you available on the 27th?
You don't. I have a question right now. Trying to work out.
I suggested the 27th, just because, well, I think I put in there partially, partially, and there's only three days in there.
How about the 28th? It'd be better, I'll see what I can do with my... If we can meet on the 27th, but maybe we can meet first. The joint meeting first in there. Does that work, or can you guys meet earlier?
Well, that's interesting, because we're starting to do computer programs.
But this isn't the...
Lightning.
Lightning.
You're rushing that.
So what time are we talking?
If we can meet there. Can you do more than that?
You have to put it away, you have no character, or change, huh?
No, but I want to carry it valid, so, okay, yeah, that's fine. We'll just make it work.
What's it for?
Some phone.
Four would be better.
Four would be better for me.
I can make four. Might have to make four back. It will be like you, will be...
We'll get to that.
Four flat work?
Yeah.
For the joint meeting.
Where is the law, so you can get off?
If ESC, you know, it's not part of this agenda, then go...
Say, what is this meeting going to be held here next month? That's just the big issue here.
That's the issue. Like, you need to hear an fax that you could get where you need to go.
The reason why I'm on that is because I would like to get together with all of the former board members that we've had previously in this district that are live, and I would like them to all come to the board meeting and have a picture of all and when they served and things like that. And I know they'll... At least I think they'll come. You know, and since it's our last meeting, I would like to have it here at the Almanac and sort of have that picture of all of them.
Do you have a list of these people?
Oh, boy. There's going to be a list. We're going to talk about this, too. But I know it's Keith, and we want to schedule that for a half hour ahead of our board. Yeah, it's just going to take a while. Absolutely.
I doubt a minute, and then we'll stake the board.
No, we'll just take it.
But maybe look at the picture at 3:30, is that...
And I'm going to have a picture of Keith. And then I'm going to hope to use some secretary to hack me with this.
The general person.
Yeah, and...
They'll be in all the ankles, too.
Yeah, what's that?
They'll be in all the ankles.
Yes.
Maybe there's a retired guy that would like to... Kidding, right?
Jumper.
So this is June 27? Yeah.
Up here again, or at the elementary?
Actually, the elementary.
Yeah, earlier.
Well, yeah, if we don't do that, then that's going to make... Yeah, later, so let's just do it here. Any problem with coming here?
Elementary?
The elementary.
The elementary school?
Yeah, we'll go back to the... We did this. Put that in minutes. So Monday, 6/27, joint meeting is first at 4:00. ESC meeting first, though, do we have to have it at 4:00? We're going to do the joint meeting first. That's so Dave can get on.
That's accommodate Dave.
That's why we were flopping. I'm going to try to get him here earlier than 4:00, obviously. He said you got to be out here by 7:00?
That can be a...
So she can get out here?
Would it be... I'm just saying, if we're going to meet with the joint board first, we're going to meet for an hour, right? From 5:00 to 6:00?
4:45.
Meet to talk about in Chinese and Chinese.
Could I suggest that we actually set the posted meeting time for the ESC at 4:45, for instance?
Yeah.
So that we can legitimately start if that first meeting is over early? That at least keep things streamlined.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, why... You know, I got to work at 3:30 in the afternoon to get here by 4:00. He's got to leave by 7:00. We could go at 5:00. Oh, yeah, okay.
If it's better for you, that's fine. I don't care. I can be late.
So we're at 4:00. Okay, joint. And 4:45. Which one?
For the ESC.
That doesn't make it a reward. I could buy it like that.